For our trips in service. You're welcome to the, well, this is January 25th meeting of the zoning board of Beales. We will be, we have a fair number of people on the remote tonight, so they will remain muted. And if they want to be recognized, they'll mutate that to Shawna and she'll unmute them at that time. Because Kelly, we don't have to mute muted.
You can.
You can mute me. I'm okay with it.
Okay. Our procedure is that we will receive applications for variances and we'll have a public hearing. Those will begin with the presenter requesting the variance, will present their case for why they wish to have a variance. When they've presented all of their information, we'll ask questions of them. Anyone in the audience here or at home can ask questions then. And then after that, all the information is brought out, we can ask the applicant to close the public hearing. And if they're in agreement with that, we can do that. We generally tend to vote on the night of the presentation. You have 62 days, however, to make a decision. Okay, let's get started then. Continued public hearings, we have one on Fallbrook Park, which is being continued again, I guess, in February. May bring up some questions of how long one can continue with a public hearing, but we can talk about that later after end of procedures. Oh, I would like to do the organizational meeting at the end.
At the end, sorry.
Sorry. Okay, the first new public hearing is an easy and associates representing John Kelly Alverman, owners of property at 3473 Lakeview Lane. They're requesting area variances for in addition to an existing residence. Front setback at 18.75 feet, 35.25 when 50 is required. Building coverage of 12.6% variance and 37.6% is proposed and 25% is maximum. Lot coverage of 17.4%, they're proposing 57.4% when 40% maximum. Is there someone here to present that tonight?
Is it me or mine? I'm John.
Oh, okay.
I saw Erin on.
Yeah.
She's going to be joining and presenting them?
Hi, guys. Hi, guys. Erin Joyce with Joyce Consulting Group, the civil engineer on the project. I think we might have someone, I think there is someone from the architect's office who was going to go through the presentation, but I'm not sure if they're signed on and available to speak. So maybe just give them a moment and I can jump on if they are not available.
And who would that be? I don't see.
That's Jamie.
Jamie Alexander?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, or she. Jamie Alexander is on and on muted.
I'm Jamie Alexander from Wolf Architecture.
Okay, great.
If you would present the request for the variance.
Erin, do you want to explain the project first?
Sure. So what we have here is a single family house, an existing single family house that has a detached wood frame garage. So basically, Lakeview Lane, you have a framed garage detached and then the house sits lakeside of that. What the proposed project is doing is renovating the existing residence, maintaining the lakeside of the residence, but creating a attached garage and house renovation between the piece of the existing single family residence that's going to remain in Lakeview Lane. And then there's a minor reconfiguration of the existing driveway associated with that. And we are showing some stormwater improvements to accommodate those changes. But overall, it's really kind of converting this detached garage, single family home situation to a single building that has an attached garage associated with it.
Okay. You would like to discuss the variances that you're requesting?
Sure. So the variances that we are requesting, as you had noted earlier in the meeting. So we have a minimum front yard setback that we are requesting a variance for. So from Lakeview Lane to the attached garage portion of the house is not going to be able to meet the 50-foot requirement. So we're showing it as 31.25. The existing garage is currently setback 32.58. So it's pretty close to the, where the existing garage is setback. But this would be, that garage would be coming down and this one would be slightly closer to Lakeview Lane than the existing detached garage would be at the 31.25 foot setback where 50 feet is required. The second variance, well, the second and third variance that we are requesting is associated with lot coverage. So where we have 25% max building coverage allowed, we are seeking, we are currently showing 37.6% where the 25% is required. So we are seeking a variance on max building coverage. And then similarly, with the increased max building coverage, it's impacting our max lot coverage as well. So where 40% is the minimum building coverage, we are requesting to have the 57.4%. And I think maybe the architect who has been working with the owners throughout this process might be able to give some background insight into just the design challenges and how they ended up with this configuration and this size. And maybe can share a little bit more information, background information on just why this, why this project kind of ended up in this configuration.
And so as Erin has stated, there is that existing detached garage located towards Lakeview Lane and it's currently approximately 320 square feet. And we're basically just creating, we're connecting that detached garage to the residence. And in doing so, the total additional square footage is, the additional square footage is approximately 780 square feet. And we're also introducing a small spare to go up to a bonus room located right directly above that garage.
Are you aware of any variances which have been granted in that area or that development? Since this is considerable variance that you're asking for?
I am not. I am not.
Are you referring to potential variances on neighboring properties? Is that the question?
Yes.
I, I am not aware offhand, but we, we could seek that information. I don't know offhand.
Are you aware of any?
I did not research.
Driving, you know, driving along the road there, it looks as though there may have been some variances.
I looked, actually, Chip, I, I looked. I didn't see anything. I don't know if we've had many, many come in front of us from down there. I don't, I don't recall.
Can we look at, I'd say, at least get a lay for the lot coverage? Can I just point one thing else out? Across the street from that, Lakeview Lane, there's a four and a half acre open, probably the biggest open area as you go down Candelo Lake. And that's basic, that's part of the HOA, which is 1/13 of would be what I, what I would own. So if you add that 1/13, that's about a third of an acre, which is significant to make the coverage variance. Not as dramatic. And I would point out that having it all the light way that it is, rather than having them all separated into single lots, allows a big open area space that you wouldn't have if you had separated them all lots. So I think that at least a little consideration should be given, the fact that we also have.
Chip, who, who is that? Was that somebody from the audience or was that?
The homeowner, Kelly.
Okay, got it.
He's referring to the common space, right?
Yes.
So there's a common area right next to, right here. That they all share this parcel.
So there's 13, 13 lots and share that area.
All right, here we go.
Is that part of your, part of your deed that you own or you have? As far as, we're 1/13 to the HOA.
Hey Shawna, can you scroll down like, what is it, 3480, I think, or just a couple houses over? Like.
Is what, what do you?
Right, yeah, right there, 3483.
Yeah.
I was just kind of like doing a visual and trying to see what the lot coverage and what the situation is at that house. Because if we're looking for a comparable property, I'm wondering if that's not it. See what I'm saying?
Yep, yep. Yeah, they look very similar and so it's.
Yeah, it actually almost even looks a little bigger, but, but I can't tell by the tree.
Right to one. Very close in size.
Yeah, right? I wonder if there were any variances that we granted during, you know, what the history of that property would be to use as a comparison, anyone?
Is this property currently conforming in lot coverage?
Currently, it is not conforming in lot coverage. It's currently is 44.1% lot coverage for just overall lot coverage. And the current building coverage is 27.8. So in both of those situations, it is pre-existing non-conforming in that.
Okay.
Yeah.
So the variance is to increase the non-conforming.
And there's no increasing or of any variance on the lot lines to the sidelines?
Correct. The minimum side yard setback is eight feet and we are maintaining the eight feet.
Okay.
I was just quickly looking to see if we had anything handy about that lot, but I don't have.
Yeah, it would be helpful, I think, you know, for us to at least know what, if we've granted anything in the past in that neighborhood, that would be at least justifiable, you know, in our findings, if we were going to grant it.
We did something down there. I think it was a front setback to a garage.
So with the 62 days to make a decision, you can always give staff time to look up and do some research for you. That's a consideration.
Another question I'd have is, just the lot coverage is an issue as well. Are there ways that you've considered trying to decrease the lot coverage? We don't have the plans there, but there's a fair bit of sidewalks, looks like.
Yeah, the sidewalk is very minimal in width. The applicant could choose, you know, the applicant could to potentially mitigate, you know, the impact, typically the negative impacts of lot coverage is increased runoff. And ways to kind of help alleviate the runoff could be to have the applicant could look at selecting a permeable paver for the sidewalk or doing some sort of alternative surface treatment for the driveway even as a consideration. While it wouldn't technically reduce the hardscape nature of it, it would provide an infiltrative engineered system that's, you know, better. I mean, it, it really does pick up water and infiltrate it better than grass can. But from a runoff perspective, those sorts of things really can help mitigate those types of concerns for why, you know, variances to lot coverage might be, you know, considered. So you, you could do something like that or we could look at something like that for the walkway at least. So as an option.
And as you know, at, right at the lakeside, runoff is a major consideration.
Just as, just as another bit of a comment, I think it was in 2009, it was before I was there. The house that I have and the house right next to it used to be owned by the same person. And that, that person put a drainage system all in that, that whole back corner by where the road is. There is a big drainage system in there already and we really get almost no water.
It's also flat.
It's got, if you're looking, I don't know if you can see it, if you look in it, there's, there's some, there's stone canals going all through that other, the other side of the road. Directly, yeah, directly on the other side of the road from my house. Right, right there, right in there. If you look at it, you'd see there's a whole drainage system and then there's a sewer system.
The sewer station, you've got sewer right here, right?
That's the, that's the pump.
Yeah.
That's the, pardon.
And another consideration, the existing site, the existing residence doesn't have any sort of stormwater management systems, collection infiltration systems that can help offset the, offset the runoff that happens when you have impervious area added to green space. So right now, the site doesn't have any sort of mitigation systems, collection systems. It really, the water from the existing driveway can flow, you know, through the grass towards the lake eventually. But as part of this project, we are implementing infiltration system, stormwater management system that will be able to provide additional mitigation for storms, collect the driveway runoff. So I think there is some improvements for that too, which would help offset, yeah, that overall increase in coverage for, for what would be added and even what's there.
So that is part of the plan, the site plan that was presented?
It is, yep.
Anyone else have any questions?
Well, the, the portion where they talk about the HOA and the common space, I haven't seen that at all. And I don't know that it's even germane to this. I don't know what Chris would say about this because to me, I don't really feel that, you know, if we're going to, we're handing out variances, you know, for a particular lot size. I'm just saying, I have never come across that, you know, done that many HOAs. And I mean, there are HOAs that have huge levels of woods and set, you know, ponds, et cetera. Is that all, is that included?
No, absolutely not.
I, I'm quite sure we did a lot down here. Because I remember that discussion about that open area.
So, so the next door neighbor, one right up from me, just built the house. And, yep, that one. And he said that as part of his lot coverage, he used 2/13 of that in his, in the calculations. And that was discussed here. Because I know that because he suggested that I, that he was the one that suggested that.
He really, look at this.
He had a big double lot, though, it looks like, yeah. It's a big house, but I'm not sure he needed a lot coverage for that one. Shannon?
I asked my notes.
Kelly, you have any other questions?
No, I'm good, I think. I, I guess my only question is, may I be more comfortable knowing if there was any history down there that, because I don't recall doing anything. But if you think we've given grand, you know, granted variances down there, that would be my only, my only suggestion, if we could figure out what was, what's gone down, gone on down there.
And there haven't been a lot of them, I know that.
Yeah.
They go backwards.
Being so close to the lake, I want to be, make sure we're doing our due diligence anyway.
Here is one for the neighbor to the north, a rear setback variance. 98. That would need more time, so I don't want to do this now.
Does the applicant want to present anything further now? Is there anyone in the audience here or at home that would like to present any information or questions? Hearing none. I guess the only question here is, I think, I'll put this to the applicant. If you would like to look into more variances that have been, you know, given in the area so that we have some idea, when you talk about it being not changing the character of the neighborhood, if there are other places that have gotten variances, that makes a difference.
Okay, I'm not really sure exactly where the records would be kept.
Yeah, well, it'd be in the development office.
That's something that you can talk to your engineer about. I know that at least Fenencia has done that in the past, done some research.
A lot of times we'll have, you know, the application will include, you know, granted variances here, you know, similar variances. And that can be very helpful. You know, if you wish to have time to do that, we could turn the, hold the discussion and then put it up next month's. That's up. Erin, you?
Yeah, we can look into trying to figure out some of the other variances in the neighborhood, see if we can pull that information together.
I think that would be helpful because that really speaks to the character of the neighborhood. Because it is, it is a significant variance, your request. Yeah.
In the event of there, if, you know, if by chance there aren't, there isn't any record of variances, one thing we could look at is just looking at like a very approximate lot coverage, if we can tell from aerial imagery of a couple of the other properties, just to give a sense. I don't know if that's helpful.
That would be, yeah, that would definitely be helpful for me too. I, you know, as a board member, I'd like to see that, you know, if there, like you said, if there wasn't anything granted in the past. I mean, you can visually see that some of those houses are probably very similar to what you're proposing, but it helps us make a better decision going forward, so.
Yeah, we would, I guess ideally, we would be able to rely on some of the other variances that might be granted. And we could offer a little bit of a very abbreviated calculation for the benefit of the board to help this decision. I mean, just being mindful, though, we typically don't want to call attention to non-permitted things on other people's properties. But it would really just be to try to help to understand in the context of the neighborhood what some of the lot coverage ranges are. So I think we could look at that. I think that would be possible. Great.
I think I would find that helpful.
Yeah, very much.
Would you be comfortable with having us continue the public hearing to next month? And we'll discuss that additional information?
So this will be continued to February 21st?
Okay.
If the board chooses to do that.
Okay with that. Kelly, you all right with that?
I'm good.
Jamie, do you have any comments on that? Is that all right?
That, that works.
And all right, was there, was the owner on the call? I wasn't able to see her. Is he present?
He's here.
Oh, okay. Is he all right? He's all right with that?
He nodded, yes.
Okay, just checking.
So that would, pending they were granted or amended, whatever happens on the 21st, then planning board would be the 28th of March.
Okay, so we'll, we'll continue that public hearing?
Just out of curiosity, we have 60 days to make a decision on this. What we're really talking about here is just getting more information.
Right.
And, and does that have to be presented in a public hearing? And that be added on everything? I mean, they're not offering to change any of the variances or, you know, it becomes a.
Might have some discussion about the, you know, more permeable surface in terms of blocks and that kind of thing too. Because that would be a way to obviate some of the variance.
But if, any deliberation you have has to be in a public hearing.
Well, I understand that, but I'm, what we're talking about is getting information from, about what's already there. And I don't, I'm just, just asking a question. I don't know that there's much to deliberate. We're all just seeking this, this, this number to see if it's within the realm of this 57, you know. I guess it's just like, go and continue the hearing. And that's fine, everybody's on board with it, so, yeah. I just thought I'd.
They can't, because they can't give us additional information if we close the hearing.
Okay.
It's more of a formal process, correct?
Correct.
Yes.
Okay.
If you're ultimately changing the law or again, release from the code, we have to keep that public hearing open to get more information.
Okay. Okay, so we'll move that then, continue the public hearing until February. Thank you very much, Erin, Jamie.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you all. Thank you.
Erin.
Okay, the next public hearing is Mars Engineering, representing Hennekar Properties. This is on mobile, 5534 Mobile Road, requesting a 10-foot, 10.1-foot side setback on an area variance of 14.9 feet. It's proposed when 25 feet is necessary for a new residence.
I'm Logan Rockcastle with Mars Engineering. So I'm not sure if you're familiar with the site, but there used to be a mobile home that was demolished. And they're keeping the driveway in what used to be a shed or smaller garage. They're keeping the pad for that. So that's going to be part of the existing site conditions. So the new residence that they're proposing, it does impede on side setback. But if you look at the existing footprint of the demolished building, the existing one didn't meet the front setbacks or the side setbacks. So what we're doing, we're actually improving the conditions of what was previously there. It's just the size of the dwelling, which is a modular home, which is pretty cookie cutter as far as dimensions go. That's why we need the variance based on the size of the modular home.
So the previous home there had been close over the road?
Yes, I think there's a dimension on there.
Oh. This is the previous, this is not the, this is the old one.
That's the old one. But is there a dimension on that? 20.2.
20.2.
Yeah.
And the size.
The front setback requirement is 60 feet. And we're pushing the building far further. I think it's 66 feet as far as front setback. And the side setback, it's kind of going off the secondary form of egress. It's a little landing and stairway.
On site plan, I saw.
Yeah, I, we might have to pass you around with people now, we don't see. We might have to pass you around with the paperwork, I'll be out soon.
Yeah, I have a paper copy here if you'd like to see it.
It got into the, oh, thank you.
So I can kind of go over it with you. So this, it's kind of like this, this is a mobile road, existing drive, concrete path. This kind of orange outlines the, what was the existing structure. So now we're pushing it back here, and the variance is for this side setback, which is actually the same as the existing building that we was.
So the reason you can't move it further from there is because of the pad being there and utilizing that?
Well, we just, this is the side, this is the setback here, so we need another, we're trying to minimize the amount of setbacks that we're having, so we're trying to hold this, this side and making it the same distance as the existing, yeah. So we're trying to make it even throughout.
So in other words, the building itself is too wide to fit in there?
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
So what happened with this is it was demolished without a demolition permit. Had that happened, we would have noted that it was a pre-existing, existing non-conforming, and it would have been basically resulted, so this is really, you know. It's unfortunate, but necessary, I guess.
So, so it was demolished before you, before you had a, what was that? I didn't catch that first part.
Oh, had it, we could have certified the pre-existing non-conformities on the lot, but
Got it.
It had been replaced basically in kind, but because it was demolished without a permit, that basically gets rid of any pre-existing non-conforming certification, if you will.
Has this area changed at all? I mean, I remember at one point in time they were going to combine this, cut this over to Purdy Road, and it was
There was a whole bunch of different things going on there.
I don't know that information. I know what's getting to be on this.
It is as it is.
Okay, that's helpful to have that history, I think, yeah.
Actually, Dave, I think, I think what you're talking about is the one that was closer to Purdy Road, right? Wasn't it?
Right, they were going to cut through one of those, maybe even over.
I remember that. Yeah, that was, it was all those houses.
Okay, I just was wondering if this had anything to do with
No.
With
Can we look at one down on the end of there?
Yeah.
By 50 by 50?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, this one, is it this one?
I think so.
One of these.
Because I remember there sort of was a potential of extension.
So the structures in those images are gone, both of them, both the garage and the
Yeah, that's
Yeah, that's correct.
Yeah, because it's not there anymore.
Okay.
Any other questions? Questions, Kelly?
No, I, I'm, I think I'm good.
Any questions from the audience here or at home? You have any more information you want to give us before we close the public hearing?
No, I think that's it. Thank you.
We'll close the public hearing. We have 62 days to make a decision, but typically we'll make our decision tonight. You're welcome to stay for our deliberations if you wish. Otherwise, you could give Sean a call in the morning.
Okay.
Are you staying for Nelson?
Yeah.
You are, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Close that and go on to the next one. The next one is Mark and Karen Kreiser, own this property at 5945 Nap Road. They're requesting a 4.5, 4-side setback variance, 35.6 feet existing when 40 feet is required. House was positioned closer to the line than was supposed to have been. Yes, just give us your name and
My name is Mark Kreiser, and I am the owner at 5945 Nap Road. So we're requesting a four-and-a-half-foot setback because the house was placed in the wrong position.
When the enforcement officer is ready to close out the project, we get a certificate of completion and an ASBelt. Chris will check the ASBelt to make sure that it matches the site plan.
This isn't the one, no.
This is the one. So, sorry, so, but the process is, so when it was, oh, that's weird. When Chris was looking at it to certify that the client, that story, he noticed that it was placed in the wrong area.
So this is Nap Road here. Black and white houses here.
Where's the line on? Don't have a lot of neighbors that we're going to pitch on.
No, the closest neighbor is my father-in-law, at least about 200 yards away.
Yeah, I'm good. My only question was whether there are any other variances granted for this one. Yeah. No, no, that makes sense now, actually. With the, with the story, that makes sense now.
This is after the fact.
Gotcha. Gotcha.
That we have to go through.
We've got to make sure this gets into the
Same with this.
Anything else you would like to present?
Could say.
Any other questions from the board? Kelly?
No, I, I have nothing.
Anything from any neighbors or, yeah, neighbors or?
My dad sent a letter saying that he was okay with it.
Okay. We have that in there somewhere.
Is it you now?
Yeah.
I, I remember getting that and not really thinking it was an issue because he's your, yeah.
Anyone in the audience here or at home have a question on this variance request? Hearing none, are you comfortable with me closing the public hearing?
Yes, sir.
62 days to make, but we'll likely do that tonight. Okay, let's see, we're back to Mark's Engineering. This is representing Richard Nelson, owner of property at 000 Middlechester Road. Requesting two setback area variances from the parcel boundaries for a new driveway. 6.9, two foot setback variance, and an eight-foot setback variance. This is an unusual property situation.
Certainly is, kind of limited on where to access this property. No, I believe the code kind of spells out you can have structures within the setbacks that don't need a variance. The actual driveway itself needs a variance. Because it's usually, you know, centered so far off the properly, property line, but this case, this is more like a flag lot. And it's very narrow, and so my client bought this property kind of thinking he may have been able to have an access easement with a neighbor, but the neighbor does not want to play ball with that. So we're kind of limited to using the frontage that he has currently and then creating structures to cross the creek and then accessing his house in the back portion of the parcel.
When, when was that parcel subdivided?
I'm not exactly sure.
Yeah, we looked at that because we were wondering what
I was going to say, I can't say recently, or
Right, right.
I don't believe it was recently.
It wasn't, it wasn't.
Yeah.
It, it wouldn't have been allowed. There's many constraints on this property for this applicant, including wetlands and slay earths.
And we're working with the DEC and getting the proper permitting to cross the creeks, develop within a wetland and things like that. So that, that's all in motion. It's not completed yet because that's quite a process. So we're just trying to get the proper town approvals first before we kind of move forward. Make sure that we are allowed to have a driveway before we create more of a problem.
There's the drive.
Right.
Right.
And that, next to it, is not a road. That's another weird-ass driveway going.
That's a driveway that goes up.
This one?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's the neighbor who
So that's another strangely shaped lot.
Yeah, this guy, it's like bizarre.
Yeah.
Okay, and there's not another road, right? I mean, it's
Correct. That's it.
No, that's it.
That's it.
Really too bad, there couldn't have been an agreement between them.
I know, I mean, it would have been, they could have used the same exact driveway, they could have had, you know, maintenance agreements. And then just a little offshoot in that corner to access his house, but the neighbor just wants to have his privacy in his own driveway, so I mean, you can't blame him for that, but that's his own choice. But this is what we're left with in order to make this house, this parcel developed, developed. I mean, it's a beautiful piece of property. Walking around it, I, I can see why he wants to build there.
Sean, our, I guess our only thing would be allowing variances for a driveway if it can be developed according to the DEC and all the other constraints that might be there for the crossing.
Right, you can, you can grant the relief from the setbacks, and then at planning board, prior to that, we'll go through all of the necessary approvals. As well, you know, working with the town on the poll, we're obviously, everything, there's a lot involved with this.
Ours could be conditioned on obtaining those
Proper permitting?
Proper permitting.
Yes, you can absolutely do that.
Yeah, I mean, like in this case, it's, it's not self-created. You know, it, it's kind of a, you try to help the applicant. I mean, what else are they going to do with this?
Yeah, exactly. That's what we're fighting, as well, trying to make the most out of existing conditions.
Right, the applicant came to me last week because this neighbor here had offered to give him a little bit of, do a little lot light if you know what I'm saying? But it wasn't going to make
It's not enough to
It's not, I told him, it doesn't make sense.
I mean, we're still going to need the variance.
Yeah, I said in that, it's just going to hold you up, it's going to cost you more money in it, even on the rear survey.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
I wouldn't be bothered, so.
So what is the actual footage right now at the, at the, at the road?
It's not much.
The footage from the road to the house?
No, approximately.
No, it's 20 feet.
20 feet.
Yeah.
Oh.
20, approximately, yeah.
Almost 21.
And the driveway you're putting in is how wide?
12.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, what did you say?
The driveway is how wide?
It's actually 12, it's a 12-foot driveway.
Okay. I, I remember the 12 in there somewhere.
Yeah.
Can you see it?
And how wide would that have to be to not need a variance?
Well, it doesn't meet the requirement.
20 is done.
You have to be 10, your driveway should be 10 feet from the property line on each side.
Okay, so 12 plus.
Well, the road frontage, the actual, the cut would be well under anyway, right? I mean, what, what is technically allowable now?
I'm just trying to get a perception as to how, you know, how big a variance this is. It doesn't make a difference, obviously.
Well, we have it in a way to minimize grading and things of that nature. The way it's positioned is to maximize not encroaching on the parcel to the south and to make it so we're not disturbing a trouble amount of land, especially when we're crossing the, the stream. So its location is kind of based on that. We took a whole bunch of things into consideration when laying it out. I mean, the last thing we want is to create variances, but
No, I understand. I'm just trying to get a perception of
Yeah, certainly, I understand.
I mean, I have got to see a lot like that, actually.
No, I think
How good.
These days, during the last 20-some years anyway, since I've been on the board, I think if we granted a flag lot, I think 50 feet would be the minimum. Well, maybe.
I've never seen a flag lot. They were sold out here before I got
This, this one's unique though. Honest, Chip, don't you think? I mean, like, you've been on it longer than I have, but I mean, like, this particular property looks a little, I mean, it's a lot different from anything I've seen. I remember we did a, like a flag lot, maybe one or two, if that, but, in my time, but this is, this is structured differently, right?
Yes, very much so. It would not be allowed to happen again.
No.
No, no, I know.
For this reason.
Yeah, exactly.
And the applicant, I mean, he worked with us way before he purchased this. You know, and we told him, wow, this is, you're going to have many constraints. But he, you know, like Logan said, it's a really great property, so if you can engineer it to get into it, that'd be great.
The only other thing is that if there's all these fences to jump over, I, I mean, I guess you're starting without this, what's the point of going forward at all? And in reality
I mean, there are other options. We can seek legal counsel and try to get a access through the southern property, but that's the last thing we want to do.
No, I understand that. I'm just trying to say that
I mean, there are other options, but this is the easiest one.
I mean, you're starting here and then you're working, you know, with all these hoops to go through.
Yeah.
This would seem like maybe could be done in reverse, get through some of the hoops and then
Yeah, well, we are
You're doing, you're doing it all, I know.
Yeah, we're actually almost done with the DEC permit. We're going back and forth with them consulting, a wetland specialist consulting firm. So we're doing it properly the first time and going back and forth, and so, I mean, we're we believe we'll be able to cross this stream and add the driveway. In our mind, we'll get those permits. So we just need the variances to actually move forward to have it be reviewed by the planning board.
Okay, any other news you'd like to present before the board or questions the board has?
I don't believe so, I think you have all the information that I wanted to present.
Kelly, you have any more?
Uh, no, I'm good.
We don't have any audience here, anybody at home have any questions?
I'm not sure we have anybody to ask, other than Kelly. Oh, no. Oh, there's Mr. Nelson.
Yeah, there's Rick.
There he is.
Rick, do you have anything to say?
Rick, do you want to say anything?
Hi. Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I'm letting Mark handle everything as far as getting in there and I have done my best to try to work with the neighbor to the south. He just doesn't want to work with me. Unfortunately, he's called the police on me once for stepping on his land, which I wasn't on his land. But that's water under the law. So, I mean, the other neighbor north to me, he's willing to let me move stuff around and stuff and we're working together. But the neighbor to the south of me is not, just not working with me. And I plan on cleaning up this property and putting a lot of trees and stuff in here to try to make it look real good. That's all I have.
Fair, thank you.
I have one question, I'm still like, will you be able to see it? Because it's kind of back there, I mean, you probably won't even be able to see it so much, right? The house, something, or?
Right, you won't, you won't be able to see the house, but there is a lot of scrub brush that has grown up over the years and obviously if you scroll back to 2006, you can see how it's been growing up. We have been back there trying to clean some of that up because it's just garbage and it's vines that are killing off good hardwood trees.
Gotcha. How is that?
Okay, if you're comfortable with what you presented.
Can I just ask what the total acreage is?
5.6 acres.
Yeah, so, sorry, this is the actual neighbor to the south, that's my driveway. That is true that I called the police on Richard because he was trespassing and the state troopers did have to get involved because there is documented property damage and I've already hired legal counsel. So the very fact that it's not that I don't want to work with him, it's the fact that it's, I've spent $100,000 to improve my property, my driveway.
Before you continue, can you give us your name and your address?
Yeah, my name is Stephen Harris-Chuck, it's 3614 Middle Cheshire Road.
How do you spell your last name?
H A W R Y S C H U K.
Stephen?
Yep.
And your address again?
3614 Middle Cheshire Road.
Okay, all right. Chairman, I'm excited and all.
Yeah, so, so we've already, my wife and I already have hired legal counsel and Richard and I did talk about getting the easement removed if he were to able to excavate on my side of the property temporarily to put in a small retaining wall with no permanent structure being on my side, but we haven't come to a conclusion yet, my lawyer sent him an email, he hasn't responded. But my lawyer took a look at this agreement.
We're not grading on his property.
So then why would Richard ask me to excavate on my side of the line then?
But just gives us a buffer to construct the project. I mean, it's.
It's over the line though, right?
No, no, it's not, it's not.
That's what Richard said it was, it was over the property line, based on the drawings you sent.
It's not, you can look at the drawings, it's not over the property line.
So I'm not sure what Richard was referring to then when he sent me a letter saying we need to excavate on my side of the property.
We suggested to do that, just to have good faith in you, is that needed to happen. But we made the plans accommodate him not having to compromise his easement.
Yeah, so my lawyer took a look at the easement and it's basically a quid pro quo. It's one thing in exchange for another, if you clean out the ditch, you can use my property. And it was written in 1984 between two people that, what my lawyer's telling me is that it won't pass the legal sniff test. So we're already in the process of getting this removed, number one. Number two, there's already documented property damage from both him and his son on my property where him and his son have driven heavy equipment, his son drives like a eight or 10,000 pound pickup truck that left ruts on my side of the driveway. So it's not like this is some thing where he's just walking up my property line. He's wanting to bring heavy equipment and destroy my property that I've put over $100,000 into that driveway, so. Again, there's always two sides to every story, you're only hearing one of it before I obviously spoke up here.
Right, I think though, probably that discussion between the two of you is not pertinent to us at this time.
Yeah, you're right, I just wanted to respond to what Richard was saying there, which wasn't true.
Sure, no, that's okay. Okay, anyone else have any input they want to make?
This is Rick Nelson, I'd greatly appreciate if you get, if we can get this approved as far as this driveway goes. I'm just trying to do the right things and try not to step over other people's feet and whatever they say, okay? Thank you.
Okay, comfortable with us closing? So we'll close the public hearing, we have 62 days to make a decision. We'll typically make it tonight, it looks like we will. Welcome to stay around for any deliberations?
Yeah.
Okay. That's all of new public hearings. Go ahead and discuss those that have been closed. Lakeview has been continued, correct? Mobile Road, any discussion on that one? Kelly, chime in here whenever you want to.
I believe we have to formally continue.
Pardon me?
We usually formally continue.
Oh, the one, Lakeview, is that the one you're referring to? That's, we're gonna continue with that one, right?
Yeah, I thought we said we would do that before.
Yeah, there's a motion to continue, I don't, I don't know the proper. Can we do a motion to continue?
Sure, I have a motion to continue Lakeview. Okay, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Formally continued.
May I ask a question before we move on?
Sure.
On this agenda from the 17th, which is the last time I printed it out, sorry if you send a new one, there was a, it's CPN 2289, property, the 3516 Sandy Beach, what happened to that?
Sandy Beach was pushed off by the applicant.
Okay. Thank you.
Is that Lacy? I think it is.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, that was revoked by the applicant, actually Logan was working on it. Yeah, so.
Yeah, I'm still working on that.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Before I see the next one.
Okay. I make a printout, I make notes, it's my process.
Now we know your opinion.
Also on the Lakeview one, it looked like ECP had not made a final recommendation.
They didn't make a final recommendation? I thought I read something in there.
Because I think there was something.
I could be.
There being an incomplete with something that confusing because they were sort of mixed up on the notes. Yeah, just, just. Just want to make sure that they're put on that one. Okay, let's go on to 5534 Mobile Road. Any comments or questions from the board here?
Not really, I don't have any.
We ready to vote?
You'll call a question, I'm sorry. Applicant is requesting a 10.1 foot side setback area variance. 14.9 feet is proposed when 25 feet is required for new residents. Shall the applicant bring the 10.1 foot side setback variance? Shannon Shergate?
Yes.
Dave Emery?
Yes.
Kelly the boy?
Yes.
Chip Saylor?
Yes. So it's approved. With, as presented, let me get my axe. So the benefits of the applicant outweighs the detriment to the neighborhood. Therefore, the variance is granted. It's as depicted on descriptions and drawings provided at this meeting. Want to make sure we get that final site plan into the record. I think granting this variance is in keeping with the character of the neighborhood. Will change the character of the neighborhood.
Due to the lack of the demolition permit.
Right, I guess the other, the other thing about it would be that I think it decreases the previous front non-conformity. Brings on a half. Okay.
Promote conditions.
Pardon me?
Promote conditions.
Yes. Conditions being that it can be done within a year of this being granted. Just a quick, the normal conditions of any approval of the building to take place within a year of our granting the variance. And also that it's as per the drawings you're serving. Okay, let's go on now. 5945 Nap Road. Any questions or terms there?
If the variance isn't granted.
I was gonna ask the same thing.
I mean, I don't know whether.
Why do you have to go to her father?
Yeah, I mean, I don't know. Whether it's better for the town or not, I don't know. If it's in a good spot, if it.
Yeah, how did it, what was, how did it end up that way, or?
The building. It was, it's a modular home, so whoever placed it that they didn't follow the site plan.
Gotcha.
I don't have a problem with it, ready to vote on that one? Okay.
Call a question. Applicant is requesting a 4.4 foot side setback. 35 feet, or I'm sorry, 35.6 feet existing when 40 feet is required. Area variance, house position is 35.6 feet from west property line instead of the required distance of 40 feet. Shall the applicant grant a 4.4 foot side setback variance? Shannon Shergate?
Yes.
Dave Emery?
Yes.
Kelly the boy?
Yes.
Chip Saylor?
Yes.
Okay. As depicted in descriptions and drawings provided at this meeting, benefit to the applicant does outweigh the detriment to the neighborhood and the variance is therefore granted. I think this is a minimal variance, basically. It's only will not change the character of the neighborhood. Well, you can have a reason being it was an honest mistake.
Well, yeah, and there was also pre-existing issues to begin with that you can't document. You know, unfortunately, like you said, it's not really a, it's an honest mistake, right?
Right.
But there were some pre-existing things in there.
Anything else? Okay. Conditions then would be as presented. And will be done, it's already been done, so this is well.
Yeah, right.
Okay.
So just, is that the four conditions?
As presented, yes. I make a question. Okay. Okay. Mark's engineering for Richard Nelson at 000 Middle Cheshire Road. Any comments?
I have a comment, so, I mean, if we grant this, you know, this variance or variances, I mean, he still has to go to the planning board anyway, right? I mean.
Right.
Oh, yes, he's got many more.
Many hurdles, right?
He does, yes.
Okay, so that, I guess that was my only question, I mean, we're really not just to cut the driveway to get the property, I mean, that's kind of what we're voting on, correct, or?
Yes, and it would, I would think our approval would be conditioned on obtaining further permits. As necessary.
I have another question.
Sure.
If, again, we have 62 days to vote on this thing, if, I actually would like to hear Bob's opinion on this. And I don't know whether you can just look at the details and then we can vote or if that has to go before a public continuing hearing as well.
Due to the ordinance aspect of it, is that why, or?
No, I'm just saying that we clearly got, let's just say that the neighboring areas aren't always pleased. It doesn't sound like they're too pleased with this. It is a substantial variance of the five, there's probably three issues here that minimal. I understand it is what it is and I'm, you know, I can vote on it tonight and, you know, in clear conscience, just for what you've already said. They've got hoops to jump through before anything happens, but I don't know, I'm not trying to wail it, I think you've heard enough to vote on it. But I just, lives on Middle Cheshire Road, I just, I don't know.
You'd like some added opinion, right? I mean, I guess.
I just, I've never seen a lot like this before. I don't want to hold up anything that could possibly happen, but at the same time, you know, I, this, I mean, we're already talking about going legalize, you know, legalize it against the two of them. I don't want to have the town in the mix, so it's, and maybe I'm just, I'm not trying to make a big deal of, we can vote tonight, you know, like you're, I just thought I would ask, is that possible? We don't have to vote tonight, but.
Well, we would have to.
If we have to continue the hearing.
Continue it.
We have to continue.
We could, I mean, that's a valid opinion.
There wouldn't be, there wouldn't be any public issues, this is just a question to the board member.
But if Bob wasn't here though to present, to have the information presented though.
You have, again, you have to have that in the public.
Okay, all right. Been learning a lot.
Now, we have this set for the, don't we have this? I think we have this set for the end of February, planning board.
Yeah.
So there would be time then if you wanted to continue it to your 21st agenda. Now, your 21st agenda is getting full already.
Right.
With new applications, you can only see four.
It isn't gonna. You're telling me Bob can't vote anyway?
No, I'm saying he could, absolutely, he can vote in February if you do continue it, just we have to look.
Well, that's all I was saying, but.
But doesn't, but doesn't Bob have to hear the argument? Or, I mean, he wouldn't get the information from us, I mean, he'd have to hear the whole thing again, right?
Yes, yes, correct, at the meeting in February.
But, okay, but it is, it's just a simple majority we would need, is that correct?
Right, I believe so.
It's a simple majority, we don't need a.
There's no super majority here.
Right, yeah.
Right, right.
I'm not interested in continuing just for the sake of continuing, I just thought if Bob could vote on this thing and he could quickly look this thing over, it doesn't look like, you know, it's not rocket science, you look at the map and. But that's fine, I'm ready, I'm happy to do whatever we want.
I guess, yeah, the other way I look at it is if we don't grant a variance, there's no way to do a driveway.
Right.
Which makes it weird.
We're creating a landlot.
Yeah.
Which I think there's another one on that map, so.
I would prefer.
That's fine, that's a good idea.
Shannon, there is actually one down the road from that.
There is, yeah.
Yeah, I remember, we granted it, so.
It's a little weird one, yeah.
Next to a horse farm, kind of, right?
Middle Cheshire has a bunch of them.
Yeah.
Down my Los Feliz.
Is everybody all right with going ahead and voting now then, good? Kelly, you're all right then?
I'm good with it.
Okay. Call the question, please.
This is Nelson. There are two, do you want me to do them together or do you want to vote separately?
We'd like to do them together, I think.
Okay. Applicant is requesting two setback area variances from the parcel boundaries for new driveway. A 6.92-foot setback variance, 3.08 feet when 10 feet is required. And an eight-foot setback variance, two feet when 10 feet is required. Chili applicant be granted a 6.92 driveway setback variance and an eight-foot driveway setback variance. Shannon Shemgate.
Yes, but I just thought of another question. Can I, can I ask a question? Can we expand or do you have the plans here?
Here's the plan, you want me to blow something out?
Yeah.
This?
That, right there.
The driveway first?
Yeah. Nope, you are fine over there and then down here. So, the total across is 20. And then where that touches the road, the across is going to be 15 feet, not 12. Is that correct?
I mean, it's going to comply with general driveway apron standards.
Because basically what I'm getting to is two plus, you've got a three foot and a two foot, that means it's 15 feet in the middle, not 12.
Well, you need a, the general, the average going up to the house is 12, but you need to have an apron based on the design standards.
So that apron is, is for the total of 15, okay, right.
And that, that's within the right of way.
Yep.
And the town has design standards that each driveway has to follow. That's what our design standards follow.
Okay. I'm good.
You gonna vote?
And, and yes.
Shannon Shemgate.
Yes.
Dave Emery.
Yes.
Kelly the boy.
Yes.
Chip Saylor.
Yes. Okay. The variance is approved as depicted in descriptions and drawings provided at this meeting. The benefit to the applicant does outweigh the detriment to the neighborhood or community, therefore the granted, variance is granted. I think this is one where certainly the. This is the only suitable location where the driveway can be put because of the lot lines, topography and limits the potential sites for this. Because there's just a very narrow access to the lot. It's the only way to do this without making it a landlot. It is a considerable variance, but it's, it's necessitated by the size of the lot at the road. I think the applicant will need to obtain a number of permits from the planning board and from the EEC in order for this to be properly, a driveway to be properly installed. And ECB pointed out a number of things about there also special types of driveway construction may need to be used because of what it is. And the variance is contingent on those.
And on, yeah.
It's contingent on? On further, on the other things that need to change.
Okay.
I guess I would add, ECB had a number of comments about the type of construction necessary. So I'll go to the planning board. Okay. I'll set them.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Now, let's go into the business meeting. We have a number of things to do. Organizational, we need to appoint a vice chair. It's a nomination.
I thought that was Kelly.
Can we just appoint Kelly?
I thought we were set.
I thought we had to redo that.
Kelly.
We have to reappoint her.
Yeah, we have to reappoint.
I was really quiet, hoping that somebody would jump up.
Want me to mute you, Kelly?
Yes, please.
All right, yes. Did you see how quiet I was? I was like, no.
I was reappointed by the town board.
Yes.
And then we have to do the, our committee has to, our board has to do.
Did someone, did someone make a motion? Yeah.
I make a motion to appoint Kelly as the vice chair.
Is there a second?
Dave, why do you chuckle when you say that?
I'll second it. I think everything.
And there'll be no discussion?
No.
You can't vote if you're not here, right?
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We might have a secretary.
Well, Kim is our secretary, but we, Kim will be stepping down and we have been interviewing a lot of secretaries, yeah.
You're stepping down?
Yes.
I'm just a little too busy.
Kim has her hands on everything and this is too much.
That's why I commented when we sent out minutes at 10:29, I think.
I know, my God, I get them at all hours of the day. I actually read them as soon as she sends them, because I'm still up too.
So we don't have, we're, we just finished interviewing and we're hoping to make a selection by Friday of this week. So.
Thank you, Kim.
Yep.
Yes, thank you very much.
Yes.
So why don't we hold off and do that at our next meeting then?
Okay, so we'll do that in February.
Yeah. We don't do the engineering legal counsel, do we?
Yes, you need to appoint MRB group.
Okay.
For engineering and Christian Nadler.
Right.
Chris is still going to be our council, right?
Yes.
Well, I don't think he was gonna, I don't know if he was looking for a replacement or something at one point, but. I thought he was stepping down a while ago.
No, he's still the town attorney, therefore he will be our council as well.
Good.
You do need to appoint him as your council.
Gotcha.
And then in meeting schedule, I guess we just basically adopt the board as the board calendar.
Did, can someone make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Can you bundle the engineering firm and the legal counsel together or?
Sure.
Sure.
I make a motion to approve all of the last three things.
That's great.
Four.
Four, was it four?
Yes.
All right, four things, thank you, Shannon.
Sure.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Actually, the final is the rules and procedures, Richard.
I read through it, it looks like it's, are we changing anything?
We do need to add the Zoom protocol. Because.
The what protocol?
The Zoom protocol.
I.e., like, the fact that you're zooming in tonight. Put your camera on, so, so we have language that's the town board uses and the planning board has used ECB. And then we'll just mirror that with yours.
Okay.
Now, that's, still have somebody who's zooming in can't vote?
It's not that you cannot vote, it's that you have to have your quorum in the room.
The quorum has to be in the room.
Yes.
So like, if we had like two members there and there was only a third, you don't have a quorum, right? I mean, is that how?
Yes, that's right.
We were anxiously awaiting Shannon's arrival.
I would have gotten in the car and come over, but I had already said.
We were, we were gonna get to that.
No, you missed that, that you were actually gonna ask me to drive in.
Really, oh, I didn't hear anything when I, when I signed on, so I missed the whole conversation. I would have gotten the car.
Okay, and that, I guess. It has, it has to be a town thing, whether you can vote remotely or not, doesn't that change?
It's a state, state mandate, if you will, that the town has adopted and then ultimately the other board has adopted.
Because during COVID, you could vote remotely.
Correct.
I have changed that.
And then we're on a service, so, yeah.
But, so they, they removed all that rule? Like, they removed that completely, is that not?
So what they added was the quorum in person, basically. That you have to have your meeting.
Okay.
You have to have your quorum at your location.
Gotcha.
I would say that's the biggest issue.
One other thing under number 10. About rehearing. Upon such rehearing, the ZBA may reverse, modify, or annul its original. Order of decision or determination.
Really?
Because you could also confirm it, couldn't you? Confirm be one of the options?
That could be.
I think this is trying to say that if you're going to do something different than your original, it must be unanimous.
But it probably should be in there, just to Chip's point, I mean, to say you can do that too, right? I mean. I get where you're, where you're going with that, right?
So you're affirming your priors.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
So let me, what are we changing? Well, let me, let me talk to Nadler about that, what language.
Okay.
Number 10 on page two. Yes.
I just thought there ought to be an option for confirming what we had previously.
Right. Uphold, maybe upholding?
Hold.
No.
I mean, upholding or, I mean, what, well, most times when we continue it. Well, it's not a closed case, so we didn't, we didn't vote on it, right? Or you're talking about a rehearing, like.
This is a rehearing explicitly.
Okay. Got it.
So you're, you're checking on the language.
How about I talk on the language?
Right.
And the last sentence of number 11. I guess it goes from the previous sentence, that's only in the absence of the chairman. But I just didn't like.
Which one, which page?
Yeah, he better panic here now.
I know, right?
Item 11.
11.
About what the vice chairman can do. Chairperson, excuse me. It just, it didn't seem to tie into the previous. It says, "This board member shall act as chairperson when the town board appointed chairperson is unavailable to attend the meeting."
Maybe they don't, maybe some committees don't have a vice chair.
Yeah. And then it says, "This acting chairperson will be responsible for running the meeting, signing decision sheets, advising the zoning officer." It ought to be on application decisions at that meeting.
At the meeting where the chair, basically the chairperson doesn't attend.
Yeah, good idea.
Yeah, I couldn't find 2022.
I couldn't either, so I would be able to.
You know, Terrence actually, you know, he left kind of right at the end of the year. And, and I wonder if maybe we, that was something we overlooked, you know?
We did discuss it and we actually approved it, I don't think it just got rewritten.
Maybe, may not have been, yeah, that could be.
These will now be 2023's.
There you go.
Can we look at number 13 with? Yeah, 13 is the total number of applications that are on the agenda. Right now it's set at four.
What is it, it's, oh, yeah, well, we had it at five.
Yeah.
Did you, I was just, I wanted to see if four is comfortable for you because.
We, we reduced it because we didn't actually have a maximum at one time.
Okay.
Um, I don't know, I mean.
It was five, wasn't it?
It was five.
Was it always five, but I, I don't know if we actually had the actual number and there are some things. I know we changed some several years back, but.
Marley, you're saying you're getting backed up?
Well, I'm saying like, for, for example, had you continued that, Nelson, then we would have two continued and probably four new. So.
Yeah.
I'm wondering if maybe we.
This is new applications.
Okay, so then, maybe we clarify that any that don't count or they don't count towards the number of applications.
But I think that does that here.
We, we actually changed that, I remember, it was like maybe about four, maybe four or five years ago, I guess. Where we, yeah, it's maximum number of new applicants is five, right?
Four, well, now it's four. So you had it at five and changed it to four.
But it says, it says new applications, so I think. And, and then any changes in the number of new applications of.
Let me talk to you.
I'm getting there, you said page 13, right?
No, page two.
Number 13.
Page two, number 13.
Number 13, excuse me, I was like, wait, there's not that many on there. Okay, got it. She makes them, okay.
The last sentence.
Well, it needs to me.
Any changes in the number of the new applicants is a sole discretion of the chairperson.
So if it's continued, it doesn't count as a new application.
Yeah, I think so.
All right, that makes sense.
Want to make a power.
This would be only if he's present, gonna be present.
You would.
Yeah.
I think the rest of it looks okay, I think. So is there a motion that we can pass the rules of procedures for the zoning board as amended, I guess?
Shannon was looking at information for number 10. Yeah, 10, I need to get.
We'll have to continue that.
Yeah, can we approve these in February?
Sure. All right, other, any requests for rehearings?
Yeah.
Anything from the board? Board, the town manager, ordinance committee. We have, it looks like ECB has put in a request that the ordinance committee look at the semi, or the permeable payment, or permeable payers and all of the other possibilities of being able to have better, like less lot coverage if you use permeable surfaces.
Yeah, you do.
I'm sorry, they were, they were gonna, was, weren't they gonna look into that a while ago? Or is this, they're gonna actually implement it in our?
No, they're, they're exploring it again, it was looked, it's gonna look at.
Yeah.
I think it makes sense, I mean, honestly, people put stuff in, it's, you know, if it filters better than grass, why wouldn't we, right?
Okay. Approval of the minutes of December 20th.
I did not look at those, sorry.
I read them over, they look fine.
Okay. Make motion.
Sure.
Okay, second. I'll second you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I guess I, I, do I abstain, I didn't, I didn't look at those, I forgot.
Okay, we still have three, so we're already.
That's it, works.
Okay.
I don't want to prove anything without looking at it.
Anything else anybody has?
I signed my open office on my real pushing.
Oh, good.
You did what? I got a clap, but I didn't hear it.
But she signed her open office.
I don't know.
As a full member, no?
Oh, God.
Oh, can we change her on the website when we put up the new calendar?
Good.
Alternate to legitimate.
Full fledged. Grown up.
Are we looking for any other alternatives?
We're always looking.
Any possibilities?
No.
No.
I haven't heard any.
It, it's our, it's our nasty reputation I'm, I'm going with. It, it's our, it's our nasty reputation I'm, I'm going with.
Well, we ought to, I think all of us ought to try to think of people.
I, I've actually tried to think, I have, I don't, I don't have anybody, I'm honestly, I've, I've tried to figure out who would be a good member, but it's a hard one.
Yeah, unfortunately, our, our past two new members have come from, from the applicant pool.
Yeah, we pull them from the, Shannon.
Shannon and John.
And John Dacey, and you.
Shannon, you were, you were an applicant, I didn't even know that.
Who was? Chip. And she, oh, yeah, remember, she had the setback, the street setback.
Last January.
Yeah.
Now we can go through the files.
That's what we should do.
What, Mike, was I a jerk? Was I a jerk in the meeting? No, just kidding.
Let's, let's close this meeting right now.
Make a motion.
Second motion.
Good job, Dave, good job. Good job, Chip.
Kelly, I'm gonna close the Zoom.
Okay.
See you later. You guys have.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.